Kick it off.
This conference will now be recorded.
So we do now have five treasures. So we'll go ahead and let you go ahead and.
All right. Well, I drove all the way to the office this morning to gamble this out. So I now call this up a little retirement. Board trustees meeting for the first quarter of 2025 to order. Will you please join me in the pledge allegiance and the salute to the North Carolina flag? I pledge allegiance to the.
Flag of the United States.
America.
To the republic. Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salute the flag of North Carolina, pledge the Old North State love, loyalty, and faith. All right. With that, a handful of administrative announcements. It's a reminder, if anyone wishes to make public comment, please email Patty Hall at Patty dot Hall, P A T T I dot Hall at N C treasurer dot com. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and we've posted online with the other board materials. We ask that you mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. We will take roll call by name and for all votes. Board members, if you must leave the meeting at any point, please announce your departure. If you return, announce your return as well. Those items will be recorded in the meeting minutes. Likewise, please state your name before speaking, though hopefully, given everyone is virtual, we will be able to see that. Finally, texts or other recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on personal phones, may be public records to the extent that they concern the meeting. With that, Secretary, please call the roll.
All right, Treasure Bryner.
Here.
Charlie Perouse.
Here.
Lorraine Johnson.
Here.
Lanier McRee.
Here.
James Richardson. Bob Shay.
Here.
Raj Singh. Steve Bean. Steve. Robert Hillman. So I don't have James Richardson, Raj Singh, or Robert Hillman. Have you guys joined? Okay. Back to you, Treasurer.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd also like to welcome Kevin Sigrist, our Chief Investment Officer. Kevin's back in his previous role. He had from 2013 to 2017 and will lead the division responsible for managing state investments. Welcome back, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hear from him soon. So on to ethics awareness. All board members, please take a moment to review the agenda. Does anyone present have an actual potential or the appearance of a conflict of interest in any of these matters? Hearing none. We can move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda today are first, a delegation to make Eric Nesbit, who's joined us as well. My chief of staff, my designated on this board. The evaluation of statements of economic interest for me and for Eric. The ratification of Robert Hillman's appointment to the audit subcommittee. And the minutes for the December 6th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting. Are there any requests from the board to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular discussion items? Hearing no requests, the consent agenda items the board are adopted as presented. So let's move on to administrative matters. Over to you, Jeff.
Great, thank you, and welcome, everybody. As you may recall, at last, last February's board, board meeting, the board approved a fee holiday for the administrative fee that we collect at DST based on the level of reserves that we have. The level of reserves still remain very strong. As you can see, they're very comparable to the levels about a year ago. The reason for that is our float earnings have been high, have been higher, higher than expected. And the float earnings, as you recall, are the earnings that we have on, on checks that have been issued and are are awaiting presentment. In the past, our average, average outstanding balances ranged between 20 and 20, 25 million dollars. In the last two quarters of last year, Q3 of 24, they averaged about 30 million. And in Q4, they ranged around, raised around 39 million. We think that spike was as a result of the Hurricane Helene. A disaster and many people taking advantage of the qualified disaster recovery distributions. We've had to date over 2,000 people take advantage of that. And I think that's what has caused a little bit of a spike in those outstanding check balances. So with, with that said, the float earnings have been, have been hi- higher than expected and coupled with the stable value fund interest that we earn on, on those reserves, they, those reserves have remained strong. So the staff, staff is recommending that the board vote to continue the fee holiday for another 12 months, and we will then review the fees again, Q1, 2026. Are there any questions?
Hearing no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the administrative fee.
So moved, Bob Shay.
Thank you, Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Sorry, who was that?
Is that, that, Lorraine.
Thank you, Lorraine. So moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Treasurer Bryner.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse.
Aye.
Lanier.
Aye.
McRee. James Richardson.
Aye.
Raj Singh. Steve Bean. And Robert Hillman. The motion passes.
All right. Motion carries. So over to Reed Chisholm on legal matters.
Your materials have a memo for me on, on some Secure 2.0 amendments to both plans. The proposed amendments are in your, are in the attachments to the memo. In attachments, one and two, there are amendments that create a, a distribution option for victims of domestic violence. It just as, as background, a victim can withdraw to the lesser of $10,000, which is adjusted for inflation in future years, and 50% of the participant's account balance. This limit is combined across both our 457 and 401k plans. And the participant would be able to re-contribute to the plans within three years, so long as, at the time of re contribution, they were eligible to roll funds into the plans. This is similar to the CARES Act withdrawals that we had a few years ago, as well as the qualified disaster relief distributions from, from last year. The amendments in attachments three and four allow the plan to accept self certification by participants who request either a hardship withdrawal from the NC 401k plan or an unforeseeable emergency withdrawal from the NC 457 plan. Self certification was permitted by Secure 2.0 and makes the plans more efficient to administer. Because a participant can now self certify to the existence and amount of the need, as well as the lack of reasonably available alternatives to pay for the need. However, the supporting documentation can still be requested if we need it. And documentation will be required if a participant requests more than two hardship withdrawals or unforeseeable emergency withdrawals in the same year. I also want to point out in attachment three, which is a hardship withdrawal provision for the, the NC 401k plan. We've also revised that for clarity and align it more closely with how the provision is implemented in practice. No substantive change. And finally, there's a very minor amendment in attachment five that clarifies a reference to administrator in the 401k. And staff recommends the board adopt the, the amendments and attachments, one through five of your materials. Are there any questions? Oh, sorry.
Reed, this is, this is Bob Shay. I got one question for you. On the domestic abuse thing, my presumption, my presumption is that you can do that to start a new life, get away from the offending spouse, correct?
Yes, it is not, it's not limited in any sense, but yes.
Yeah, that was my question. The next question is, is there a restriction on spending? And you just said there isn't. So there's a potential vulnerability that the money could be spent on things other than what it was intended for.
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, and I, which, I mean, sort of going to the self certification for hardship withdrawals, there could be for that. For that as well, although those, we have, we're operating, it's not technically a safe harbor, but it's effectively a safe harbor. We're allowed to now to accept the self certification. We have the requirements of a domestic abuse withdrawal. So from a plan compliance perspective, you know, we're fine. Is there the potential that it could be just by a participant? Then, then yes.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Sure. Any, any other questions?
Okay. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the planned document amendments.
Lanier McRee, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the plan amendments.
Thank you. Bear a second.
Bob Shay, I'll second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Treasurer Bryner.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Hi.
James, James Richardson.
Hi.
Shay, I mean Raj Singh, excuse me. Steve Bean.
Aye, and I had a technical difficulty a minute ago and I'm back online now.
And Robert Hillman. Great, thank you. Back to you, Treasurer, for the read.
Motion passes. Thank you. So we'll move over to compliance amendments for the loan policy errors. Over to you again, Mr. Chisholm.
The, the second item is a correction of loan errors that occurred in both plans from February to November of last year. When Empower moved, moved the plan to a new record keeping system in February of last year, it didn't set the system to consider a loan as outstanding if it was in default, but not offset. Empower also didn't set the system to aggregate loans for participants who are employed by more than one employer. As a result, we had 151 participants receive a loan in excess of the maximum allowed by the plans. And that is, the maximum, as you may recall, is one loan per plan, per plan at any given time. With the exception of a CARES Act loan for those, those that are still outstanding from 2020. Just to put this in context, I look back at some of our reports and, and we had almost 14,000 loans that were issued by the plans from February through November and more than 49,000 loans outstanding at the end of last year. So relatively speaking, a very small number. And given the size of the error, we can correct it by having Empower correct its record keeping system, which it confirmed it had done in December, and adopting the resolution in the board's materials, which retroactively incorporates the non-compliant loans into the loan policy in the plan document. This is similar to what we've done in similar, in, in other, with other compliance matters where we've been able to self-correct instead of going to the IRS. Are there any questions? Then staff recommends the board adopt the loan correction resolution in your materials.
I'll make a motion to that effect. Steve.
For a second.
Second, Charlie Perouse.
Thank you, Charlie. I know, I'll call the roll, please.
Okay, Treasurer Bryner.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Lanier McRee.
Aye.
James Richardson.
Aye.
Bob Shay.
Aye.
Raj Singh. And Robert Hillman. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving on from legal matters to the fourth quarter of 2024 administrative report.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Greetings from frozen Columbus. Wind chill here is five. Understand that you guys got some snow there too. Hopefully it'll go away soon and get to a nice spring here for all of us relatively shortly. Joined today by Jody Musclewhite. We're going to spend the next few moments just giving an update for Q4. In the interest of time, we'll keep it pretty high level, but by all means, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. What I'd like to start on, Patty, I'd like to start on slide four today. Just take a couple of moments to review the key overall metrics of the plan. From a, from a plan health perspective, everything is looking really good in terms of the trend line. Average participant balances are continuing to increase. The active participation rate is above its historical norm. The active average employee deferral continues to set higher and higher trends in terms of what participants are contributing. If you look at slide five, continuing with the trends, the plan continues to grow. So, you know, even though, like, what we review every quarter in terms of, like, a lot of the baby boom population retiring and the effects of people withdrawing funds or perhaps rolling out, we're also replenishing that population where total unique participant balances continues to increase. Last year was our second best year ever, beating 2023 in terms of total enrollments into the plan. So another great, strong year in terms of enrollments, especially with some of the headwinds that we saw early in 2024 around the migration of the platform from the old heritage credential platform over to the Empower platform. And, and then, as Reed mentioned, overall loan activity remains consistent. And I thought while I was on, speaking about that loan thing, I would just take a second to just, at the last board meeting, we spoke a little bit about Western North Carolina and Hurricane Helene. Just to come full circle on that, overall loan activity has remained consistent. So we haven't seen a spike from that. We have seen, as Jeff mentioned, about 2,000 participants take advantage of the qualified disaster relief payment that the board put into the plan in the fall of last year. And then also, we were monitoring all of the employers out in the western part of the state. And as of right now, all of them have got caught back up in terms of payroll. So we're starting to see things return to normal there, but just thought it'd be good to just give a quick, quick hit update on that as well. Patty, if you go to slide six. This is, is one of our overall arching goal slides that we always share as well. In terms of wrapping up 2024, you know, one of the things that Empower has held account to make sure that we're delivering on, on our goals for you is around active monthly contribution rates, active participation rates, and then Goalmaker usage. So as a team, with all of our dedicated reps throughout the state of North Carolina, and from the content of how we want to communicate to participants, we always want to make sure that we're laser focused on those goals. So this, just, this page just provides context that we, we did hit those goals. And then one of the things that's not a contractual goal, but one of the charges that we've always had over the years too, is to try to drive activity at the employer level. So to get employers to either adopt the 401k or the 457, or add additional features that we know help participants. So, you know, one of those features that we, we've talked about a lot in the past is whenever you can get an employer to do like an employer contribution and employer match, it, you automatically see then the participation rate in that subplan. So that's one of the big things that we always try to do as well. And then the other thing that we have had a lot of success with is adding contribution accelerator at the subplan level too. So that's kind of, kind of noted here. But we ended, we ended 2024 with 300, just under 320 total unique participants and 17.6 billion in total assets. Just to go a little deep on, on the unique participant count. So that means that they're counted once. So you, you have about 30,000 or so folks that are in both plans. But in ter- in terms of like total unique, that's what that number reflects right there. I'd like to now go to slides 26 and 27, Patty. So before I hand it over to Jody to give a, give an update on all of the activity from our dedicated retirement education counselors. Mr. Treasurer, at the last meeting, after the meeting was over, you were catching up with Jody and I, and you asked a question around folks that are not in Goalmaker, how are they invested, especially from a single investment perspective? So that's what these two slides represent. So we have slides in our report that I won't go into detail today, but we break out in detail assets that are in Goalmaker and assets that are not in Goalmaker by, by asset category. So it kind of gives a flavor of what folks are doing, whether they're in that allocation tool or not. This goes a, a level deeper to answer your question. So folks that are not in Goalmaker but are only invested in a single participant, single investment, where are those, where are the, what are those participants doing? And then we also added an age range. So this kind of gives you that, that commentary as well. You can see that overwhelmingly the stable value is that, that top fund that is chosen. And then not surprisingly, the, the, the second and third would be those large cap ones, either the, the active managed core or the passive index. And any, any further questions for me today before I hand it over to my colleague, Jody Musclewhite? All right. Jody, over to you.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Good.
All right. Excellent. Well, good morning, Treasurer Bryner, members of the board and staff. It's a pleasure to be with you virtually this morning. As Mike shared, fourth quarter was a solid quarter and the retirement counselor team closed out the year very strong despite maneuvering through the massive platform migration. And of course, the impact of a natural disaster in Western North Carolina. Patty, I'm going to start with page 37 in the board report, which is where we begin to speak about employee engagement there. So pages 37 and 38. Mike mentioned some wonderful stats. The, the plan having achieved 26,465 enrollments last year, making it the second highest year in the plan's history. That, that is something we're very proud of and excited about. But so too is the fact that the participation rate grew and the average employee deferral increased by over 11%. So the field team contributed to this effort by delivering 2,089 group meeting, group meetings and webinars to almost 60,000 attendees across the state. In addition to that, they held almost 25,000 individual consultations last year. So on average, the team met with about 7,000 employees a month, which is pretty substantial. Fourth quarter saw statewide focus on two key initiatives, one being in October with the National Retirement Security Month. This is where we focus on holistic retirement education for those at any stage of their careers. That actually swelled our meeting attendees to approaching 12,000 for the month. So we're very pleased with that. And then in November and December, we had a territory optimization initiative, which is where we realigned our field team geographically, and that impacted about 25% of our employer relationships. So speaking of employers, starting on page 39, you can see some of the, the detail to what Mike was speaking of a moment ago. Our team worked with employers to build and grow the plans across the state and also to acclimate them to new empower processes. Last year, we had 4,264 employer meetings, which works out to be about 355 a month. And this is substantially higher than prior years. And it, we attribute that primarily to the pre and post migration outreach efforts. Like employees, we see employers taking positive actions to adopt the North Carolina plans and the optional features. There were 15 employers who adopted one or both of the plans, and that impacted 2,000 employees, improving their retirement options. 34 employers started or increased employer contribution programs, which benefited 6,300 employees directly. One example of employer growth that I'd like to just share with you comes from the city of Albemarle's decision to start a 1% match for their 300 full-time employees. This was actually years in the making. City leaders have been interested in the past, but you know, competing priorities and other budget issues seem to get in the way. And about this time last year, their local counselor, Kelly Martindale, approached city leaders about reconsidering their employer contribution opportunities. And this time, there may have been a little bit more appeal for those folks because Stanley County, which is where Albemarle is located, had recently started a contribution program for their employees. So after years of trying, city leaders were able to implement a 1% match. And a match is more administratively efficient when employees are using percentage-based contributions. So Kelly worked with her contacts at the city to convert all current participants from dollar-based contributions to percentage-based contributions. And at the same time, she held education meetings for city employees, talking to nearly all of them over multiple days on site. The net result was that the match and the new contributions went into effect January 1st. And Albemarle's participation rate grew from 36% to almost 60%, simply as a result of implementing this opportunity. It's just one example of many that I could cite where the impact of the field team has for improving the retirement outcomes for North Carolina governmental employees. You know, other notable actions that, that you'll see on pages 39 through 42 include new or increased employer contributions from five counties. A host of municipalities, including Brookford and Greenville, Harrisburg, Kannapolis, Maiden, Smithfield, and others, plus some, some other municipal employers. So although 2024 was marked by, you know, significant changes, the counselor team stayed focused and true to their mission to improve retirement readiness for North Carolina governmental employees. They worked to educate more than 83,000 people and provided guidance and best practices to over 1,000 employers. And quite frankly, as a result, thousands of people are now in a better position to improve their retirement trajectory. And that's something we're really excited about. It's what motivates us every day to continue doing what we do. So, Mike, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Sorry, I couldn't find my mute button. No, I'm good, Jody. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions for our partners at Empower?
I don't have any questions. I do want to say we had a representative from Empower come speak at an OSBM lunch and learn in January, and it was very. an OSBM lunch and learn in January, and it was very educational, and we appreciated it a lot. And I know our employees appreciated it. So with that, I have to drop for a work call, but we'll hop back on as soon as it's over.
Thank you. Mike, Jody, thank you for the presentation and for your partnership. Just a little editorial comment on the data I'd asked for and you guys nicely provided. I think we have to consistently ask ourselves, what are our members telling us in their investment choices? And the data that they present shows you, I think our members are largely asking for index product and stable value product. Outside of Goalmaker, that's what we see. And so that's a topic that we'll consider and reconsider at board level here over time. And I just wanted to get that in front of everyone's radar as we think about how to better serve our members. So with that, let's let's move over to Matt Copern from BNY for Custodian of the Bank.
Great. Good morning, everyone. We certainly wish that the weather had allowed us to be onsite and in person, but we do appreciate the opportunity to, you know, present to you virtually nonetheless. I'm going to start with a quick introduction to Treasurer Bryner and Mr. Sigrist and everyone, anyone else at the board who may not remember me from the past couple of February SRP board meetings. So I'm Matt Copern. I'm a Director and Relationship Manager within Asset Servicing or the Custody segment of the Bank of New York Mellon. I'm responsible for SRP's custody and portfolio accounting relationship with BNY. Along with me today is my colleague Madison McNally, who is my counterpart within the Markets Division of the bank. Markets can be thought of as securities lending, FX brokerage. So we represent two different divisions of the bank. I'm going to provide a very brief corporate update. We're going to share some insight into two areas where BNY is focusing our growth and development. Because I think that these these things are, these areas are things for SRP to think about as it kind of moves forward. From a corporate update perspective, twenty twenty five was another year of growth for BNY. We became the first custodian bank ever to surpass the fifty trillion in assets under custody and administration mark, which is really an incredible milestone. We're actually at fifty two point one trillion today, which is a fourteen percent increase from the time that I presented last year. That assets are assets under custody and administration, or A U C A, as you may see it from time to time. That number is typically a good barometer as to how custodian banks are faring in the market and the overall strength of your custodian bank. So with BNY being, you know, surpassing that fifty trillion market should give you and your your retirement participants comfort that, you know, the the assets are safely kept with the with a great bank. We strengthened on key business wins, general market growth, and also a philosophy of our CEO, which is running our company better, which simply means that, you know, over twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, we've been more purposeful about our cost management and where we're spending our budget. We've increased our employee footprint to over fifty three thousand employees, which actually includes a large growth area here in the US, and that is in Lake Mary, Florida. We have over twelve hundred employees in Lake Mary, Florida. We've also increased our service over, service oversight of the top one hundred US retirement plans as well. So BNY now services ninety four percent of the top one hundred US retirement plans by size. That's up from ninety two percent last year. We've been able to achieve success by investing in technology. You'll see on the on the slide, an incredible three point eight billion dollar technology budget that BNY allocated itself in twenty twenty four. This this allocation to technology was really to both automate our processes in efforts to reduce costs and reduce manual processing risks, but also to deliver solutions to our client. There there is a big focus in the industry right now on future proofing, and I put that in quotes, on future proofing businesses. It's kind of a buzz term that you've probably heard. Again, future proofing. And I'm going to share an example of how BNY is helping retirement systems and treasuries begin to kind of future proof for tomorrow. So Patty, if you don't mind flipping to the next slide, I'm going to spend just a few minutes on real time payments or RTP and actually share a kind of a case study here. So when thinking about payments to retirement plan participants in the past, it started with checks, right? Then ACHs became and kind of remains, or I shouldn't say kind of does remain the standard today. But today, everyone wants their money faster, essentially on demand, and that's where real time payments come in. So real time payments or RTP is essentially the Zelle, the Venmo, PayPal, where a user gets their money immediately upon release. This includes scheduling payments to send at very specific times of the day. The slide on the screen shows a real life case study where a firm called Conduit, who you probably know, came to BNY and said, here's our issue. We need to get payments to our participants in a more timely, in a guaranteed manner. They had cited reasons such as, you know, increase in natural disasters preventing retirees from accessing banks and post offices in person and being able to access their money. So they had come to us and said, we need a solution to be able to guarantee our plan participants can have money, you know, can have access to their funds on demand. So we, so we employed our RTP capabilities and not only solved their need, but you know, it was a huge success and actually garnered a lot of national attention. So we've had a lot of clients reaching out to us. We actually just just completed our largest RTP transaction in history, which is a ten million dollar payment. So I think what's important here is you think about, again, the SRP plan participants is there's capabilities for the payments to be made twenty four seven, three sixty five. You could send e-bills to plan participants to receive immediate electronic payments rather than wait, wait for loan repayment checks, for example. So again, though ACH remains the standard, BNY does believe that RTP is going to be the future, the same way as ACH was the future after checks. Again, this is an area where we're we're helping clients kind of future proof and we're investing our funds. So as SRP considers future proofing, and whether it's BNY, whether it's with Empower, whether it's BNY and Power partnering together, I think that the message here is that regardless, we do believe that SRP is going to start receiving increase, or you will start, you know, hearing noise in the industry about, you know, what what type of RTP capabilities are being made available for that that younger generation who is probably more familiar with such, you know, applications and payment methods and whatnot. So again, that RTP is a real focus of BNY within our Treasury Services Division. And we we have started receiving, you know, inquiries from other DC plan clients on capabilities. So a pause there for for any questions?
Just curiosity, is the underlying technology here blockchain based?
It is, it is. And that will be honest with you, that that gets a little bit over my skis in terms of the how the technology works, but in short, yes, it is.
I'm seeing applications of that everywhere. So.
If no other questions, then I'm going to ask my colleague Madison McNally to share some insight on securities lending and how that might be beneficial for SRP.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you Treasurer Bryner and the board and staff for having me. Just confirming everyone can hear me okay? Great. So as Matt mentioned, I am Madison McNally, and I sit within our financing and liquidity business within capital markets at BNY. I look after the existing securities lending relationship with the North Carolina Defined Benefit Program, but I'm also the Client Account Lead across North Carolina, working with all coverage touch points across BNY. Today, I'm here to provide a brief overview of securities finance capabilities, and I'm happy to dive deeper if there is any interest in a follow up session, given our time here is short. So Patty, thank you. I'm going to start on slide four. At BNY, our Securities Finance Group comprises of five programs, Agency Lending, Principal Lending, our Sponsored Member Program, Secured Loan Business, and our Agency Investment Product. As a capital markets platform company, each one of these programs share the same objective of providing tools to our clients to source or deploy liquidity across their business. Patty, I'm going to flip to slide five, please. Our Agency Lending Business at its core enables our clients to utilize long assets to generate incremental revenue based on the intrinsic value of those long assets and or client collateral guidelines. Said differently, an individual investor might choose to invest their cash in the market rather than keep it idle to generate additional income, just as someone might choose to rent out their vacation home during a certain point of the year to offset expenses of the house. The decision to lend can be unique to each individual's institution. However, we typically see clients use agency lending as a way to capture additional alpha and or offset expenses. As Matt mentioned earlier, BNY touches approximately one fifth of the world's investable assets with north of fifty two trillion in assets under custody. We often see instances of our existing custody clients leveraging the BNY platform to engage in securities lending. North Carolina's Defined Benefit Program is an example of this. The DB program has made strategic investments in assets as part of their investment strategy, and other investors want to borrow those assets for strategic value. BNY acts as North Carolina's agent in the market with the objective of generating ancillary returns based on their investment guidelines. We work with our clients to understand and customize their guidelines with their investment objectives and risk profile in mind. This includes review and approved borrowers or counterparties, collateral acceptability, and reinvestment guidelines if you accept cash as collateral. With the industry largest program with five point three trillion in lendable assets and over half a trillion on loan in thirty four local markets, we've built our value proposition around transparency, safety and stability. Patty, I'm going to flip to the next slide, please. We view resiliency as a commercial attribute, and our focus on continuous automation of our infrastructure allows our clients to optimize their portfolio while adhering to their unique risk tolerance and regulatory environment. We continuously assess, test and monitor active risks and have real market examples of how our resiliency initiatives are battle tested. In January twenty twenty four, a key electronic trading venue for securities lending transactions went offline. This outage tested the market's ability to execute automated trades outside of that platform. BNY's ongoing investment in technology allowed us to continue trading in an efficient and highly automated manner, which enabled us to capture market share on behalf of our clients. Whilst that trading venue has since come back online, we have continued to see interest from the borrower community in ensuring that they have the same ability to trade in an automated manner with BNY that they will have with all market participants who utilize the venue. Thank you for your time today. Happy to answer any questions should the board have any interest in discussing further. Thanks.
And I would say any, if no questions, but folks do want additional information, I've got a wealth of of RTP, you know, one pagers and and overviews that I'm happy to send out just so you can, you know, have for your reference and future consideration. And same thing Madison has with securities lending as well. Happy to share.
Yeah, this is, I'd love to to get that. I have a lot of questions, but it's based on curiosity, not on any board business. So thank you.
Sure. No, that's 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 fine. We're happy to share.
This is Steve. I've got a question as well, maybe comparable to Bob. And Brad, maybe you can comment on this as well. What with the SRP and the current Defined Benefit Plan or others, what usage of lending does the state use now? And how might that be more useful to the SRP?
Did you want BNY to address that, or would you prefer to have that addressed by, you know, internally?
Either, either that that could add any commentary onto that.
Well, I'll tell you what, BNY will start and then, you know, we welcome, you know, I can't see who's on. I don't know if Chris Morris is on. Chris would be a great resource to add some insight. But BNY does do securities lending for the DB plan today. Madison, I don't know if you have any numbers in front of you at all. I don't. I'm sorry, Madison, did you have any numbers?
Yeah, I'm pulling them up quickly. Just give me one second. Can pull up the December numbers.
And while you're pulling that up, I didn't know if anybody who might be on from the DB side might want to share some experience with the BNY lending.
Chris, why don't you address the question?
Yep. Good morning, folks. This is Chris Morris. Yeah, so we've had securities lending program with with BNY Mellon for going back towards the beginning of our relationship with them in, I guess, two thousand and seven. You know, it's a fairly conservative program, but it does add incremental income over time. The SRP was in lending up until, I think, about a decade ago, when the then the board at that time made the decision to to remove lending from the program. But it can be something we can consider going forward, and I think it's something we're we're taking a look at to see if it's appropriate to bring back to to the board.
And I think I would add, you know, a lot of clients are interested in securities lending because the income earned from lending can be used to offset custody costs, right? So, you know, oftentimes clients will be able to greatly minimize or even sometimes zero out, you know, the cost of of, you know, BNY as a custodian, for example. So those securities lending earnings, you know, are really beneficial to 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 offset, you know, operating costs of the plan.
Thanks, Matt. And just at the end of twenty twenty four for the DB plan, there was twenty billion in overall loans, with sixteen billion in non cash and the remaining in cash.
Do you happen to have a bit of a number on revenue earned for the plan, not for not for BNY, but for the plan itself?
Yeah, let me pull.
I know I'm putting you on the spot, Madison.
No, you're good. You're good. Let me pull the reset.
Hey, Chris, this is Bob Shea. You got to the heart of my question, right, is that quantifying the risk. And I was glad to hear you say conservative. Yeah, I was just thinking as I'm looking at this great slide, you know, what industries is the risk in, right? How much exposure do we have in insurance and reinsurance and exposure to, you know, big events, you know, Ukraine, airplane crashes, all that kind of stuff?
I can, I can take that one and and I'll come back off the back of this meeting with just the current revenue numbers when I run the report. I think from a risk perspective, right? If you look at, and of course, it's tailored to each client's guidelines. So we work with each client depending on what their acceptability is, but also what their fund structures are when they're lending. When you take non cash collateral, BNY indemnifies the client, right? So I think a good example is actually two thousand and eight, right, where anything with non cash collateral, BNY is indemnifying the client. And there was no examples where client had a loss in two thousand and eight from a non cash collateral perspective because BNY is covering that. Now, where the risk does sit, Bob, is on the cash side. But you, as the client, decide what your cash collateral guidelines are going to be. So of course, overnight's probably the safest rates, the most liquid. If you were going to go out to term, while you might earn more money, there's risk of that. BNY does not indemnify the cash side, but I would say North Carolina's DB plan today has very conservative, conservative, conservative cash guidelines, mostly investing in overnight and repo.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might? Yeah, if if it's of interest to the board, we'd be happy to to come back at a future meeting and give a presentation on kind of the the pros and cons and the specific risks that are associated with a securities lending program for a defined contribution plan. The the issues in the past, particularly ten years ago and earlier, were mostly around the reinvestment of cash collateral and illiquidity in the reinvestment portfolios. So quite a few defined contribution plans back then stepped away from any lending for fear that the daily transactions activity directed by the participants really couldn't get satisfied. So there has been significant changes in the guidelines over time, the way the industry works. And we'd be happy to give an update and have the board deliberate on that if you desire that.
I would appreciate that. Steve absolutely liked to see that.
And Kevin, we're happy to support anything you need from that front for that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will add that to next meeting's agenda if we can proceed on that pace. Anything else from the team at BNY?
Not this time from securities lending, but I'll come back with the numbers. So you guys will have it.
Nothing from my side. Just be safe. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So board members, any other questions there before we move on to Galliard? Okay, let's move on to Paul from Galliard, who will present the fourth quarter report on the Stable Value Fund.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Great. Well, good morning, Treasurer Bryner, board members and staff. Thank you for allowing me to present to you today. Again, my name is Paul Langenkin. I'm the Client Relationship Manager at Galliard Capital Management for the North Carolina Stable Value Fund. I'd like to just provide a brief overview of the North Carolina Stable I'd like to just provide a brief overview of the North Carolina Stable Value Fund as of December 31st, 2024, covering just a, just a few pages. But overall message that I'd like to convey is the Stable Value Fund is performing in line with our expectations, especially given the current market environment and continued market environment of elevated interest rate. And we at Galliard thank the State of North Carolina Treasurer Board and Staff for the opportunity to be your stable value provider since December 1st, 2010, or roughly the last 14.1 years. Patty, if we could please start on page seven, just want to take a quick look at rates at the end of 2024. There we go. And really just to highlight the, the different colors on this page. The Fed Funds Rate, and that's shown in that orange or light brown line, has, has gone up 525 basis points, as we've mentioned in previous meetings, in 18 months through 11 rate hikes from March 16th, 2022 through July 26, 2023, but has since seen easing by a 50 basis point rate cut in September of this, of 2024, 25 basis points in November and another 25 basis points cut in December as the yield curve returns to a more normalized shape from its current inverted one. The Fed Funds Rate is somewhat analogous to ultra short-term interest rates. The three-year constant maturity treasury in purple has been oscillating around about 4%, while the Galliard's separate account, stable value, net of fees blended yield or crediting rate in that dark green continues to follow the path of interest rates upward, but with a lag due to the unique structure of stable value smoothing of returns. What we are seeing on this page really is that these lines are converging and we should see further convergent when the Fed cuts possibly further. The market believes there's roughly a 50% chance for another cut in March, but really that is dependent on the Fed's view of inflation. This is what we would expect as the yield curve really is moving back to its more normalized shape and stable value crediting rate should move past short-term rates as further cuts happen. Turning to the next page, page eight. Really this snapshot of portfolio metrics as of December 31st. Really the stable value funds continue to provide consistent expected statistics. On the left-hand column up on the top, we see assets as of the end of the year, roughly about 2.22 billion and have decreased slightly since last quarter, roughly about 31 million or about a 1.35%. Outflows accounted for about 48 million of this, but interest earnings offset that by roughly 18 million. Lower left-hand part of the page, portfolio, portfolio characteristics as of September 30th and December 31st of last year, we can see the net, net of fee blended yield or credit, crediting rate has risen over the quarter from 3.05 to 3.13% net of all fees. The movement of crediting rate, as I said before, is as expected as that number is following the path of interest rates and has continued to rise. This gain is mentioned as aided by the reinvestment with the underlying yields. As we saw yields moving up over the quarter in that yield to maturity number, moving from 4.38 to 4.94%. As we saw these yields go up over the quarter, the market to book ratios in turn declined by about 2%. But when rates further come down, we should see that market book move closer to 100%, which should help the crediting rates further. Duration has remained 3.3 years over the quarter. No concerns there. Column on the right shows that assets have been pretty stable from 22 to 24, roughly moving between about 2.2 and 2.3 billion. Looking at the 123124 plan option balances provided by Empower, as mentioned earlier, with the single item investments from participants. Participants still do make a stable value consistent part of their portfolios and is one of the most utilized options in terms of assets of 12 and a half percent of total fund balance. The portfolio distribution below shows that the asset columns are, are consistently invested with their underlying allocations and the liquidity buffer is about 1.5%. Next page. Page nine. There we go. This shows the actual participant book value performance net of fees. And really again, further solidifies stable value fund is performing in line with expectations in this elevated interest rate environment. As a principal preservation vehicle for the state of North Carolina's participants, we do see the steady and consistent longer-term portfolio performance in the underlying fixed income funds have been able to provide plan participants. The green bar net of all fees was lagging the three-year CMT or constant maturity treasury benchmark for the most recent periods, three months, year-to-date, one-year, three-year, five-year, as they were affected again by that sharp increase in yields starting in 2022, but has outperformed on the longer-term 10-year and inception year performance, which is 14.1 years by 19 and 68 basis points respectively. Again, this was expected as the benchmark that three-year constant maturity treasury reacted to the increase in interest rates immediately, while the stable value fund reacts with a lag due to that unique feature of book value smoothing of returns. More importantly, as I'll get into a little bit later, the underlying market value fixed income returns have shown strong outperformance for their benchmarks over longer periods. Regarding the, the book value net of fee returns, again, as I mentioned in previous quarters, comparison of stable value to the three-year constant maturity treasury is somewhat apples to oranges as it really is no perfect benchmark for stable value due to that unique nature of the amortization or the smoothing feature of stable value. If no questions, we can flip ahead to page 12. Okay, just very briefly on this. As I mentioned last quarter, Transamerica had announced in June that they wanted to reduce its rap business, but is fully still committed to Galliard. So what we ended up doing in, in September is we reduced the stable value funds slight overweight to Transamerica and Prudential in their rap contracts and reallocated to MetLife or Met Tower to better balance the exposure across issuers. We are comfortable where we are in our exposure to Transamerica and within the North Carolina Stable Value account, we don't anticipate any more changes. One thing I wanted to point out in that right-hand column is that through Galliard's rap contracting, we were successful in negotiating a lower fee for Nationwide in December, moving its fee from 15 to 14 basis points. Flipping to page 16. Okay, just the, the fee page here. Over the quarter, we had a couple of things happen that helped reduce fees. One was replacing one of the underlying external fixed income managers. We replaced Genesee with IR&amp;M Income Research and Management in November as an intermediate fixed income manager. And that moved the, the fees and the investment management fees paid to non-affiliated investment advisors. That moved the fee from 5.4 basis points down to 4.8. And as I mentioned about the Nationwide rap fee decrease, you can see that in the investment contract fees moving down slightly. So total expense ratio from last quarter to this quarter, moving from 25.9 basis points, total expense ratio to 25.2, roughly a 2.7% fee reduction. I took a look at the, the report from a year ago, December 31st, 2023. Total expense ratio moved from 27.1 basis points down to 25.2 basis points, which really represents a 7% decrease in fees. So suffice it to say, great to see that we are moving total fees lower and that's even with 50% of the total portfolio invested in the external fixed income management, which is split among Dodge and Cox, Income Research and Management, Payton, Rigel, Prudential and TCW. So really the motto in stable value is that every basis point counts in stable value savings. To, to wrap up on page 20 and 21, we can start with page 20. So speaking of these external managers, you know, I want to point out the longer-term relative outperformance has been impressive for the, for the fixed income funds. You know, if we look at that five-year period, we see excess performance of 20 to 89 basis points over that five-year period. And Galliard's portfolios do remain fully invested and are mindful of the downside risks with the potential headwinds that may impact our stable value portfolios. So really good to see the, the managers adding that value to participants over time. And finally, on page 21, just want to give a brief update for fourth quarter attribution for those underlying funds. And we basically saw general relative outperformance due to being overweight spread sectors. And those are the non-treasury sectors of the fixed income market. And mainly we saw outperformance in, in being overweight in corporates, agency mortgage-backed securities, commercial mortgage-backed securities and asset-backed securities. One, some of the funds having shorter than the underlying index duration helps some funds, as mentioned. But it, and that happened because rates increased over the quarter, as I mentioned, yield to maturities going up over the quarter, while others like TCW had longer duration, had some underperformance versus their benchmark. That, those are the only comments I have for, for everyone today. If there are any questions, happy to answer them now. Okay, well, that, that's all I have to, for now, but if there are any questions, please feel free to reach out and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And now let's move to the team from Callan. Elizabeth and Weston will present the fourth quarter investment performance report.
Great. Thank you. And thanks, everyone. This is Elizabeth Hood from Callan. I'm joined by my co-consultant Weston Lewis. And just as a quick overview for those we have not yet met, as your consultant, Callan's job really is to assist the board and work closely with staff in executing all aspects of your fiduciary and responsibility and process to participants. So that includes things like strategic direction, so taking a look at the plan menu. So how many options are we offering to participants? What did those look like? What type of options? We help with ongoing manager due diligence to evaluate the underlying performance there. Is it reasonable within and in line with our expectations in different market environments? We also help with monitoring and benchmarking fees, administrative fees and investment management fees, and then a whole host of other things that come up on a day-to-day basis. So we're really here as a resource to all of you to help you make informed decisions for participants. Our update today is pretty straightforward. We have a capital markets overview. We tend to focus those comments pretty high level. So recognizing this is a participant-directed plan, we're not making active decisions for participants. We're really providing them the tools that they need. So the capital market environment really is focused on helping the board understand what happens so that as we look at the underlying performance of the options of the managers, we can help determine whether those are reasonable or whether we might have any concerns. Then we'll look at performance at a participant-level option and then look at the underlying managers that the board helps evaluate. So again, pretty straightforward. I'll kick off with capital markets and the high-level plan option performance and Weston's going to help walk us through some of the more detailed returns of the underlying managers within there. So capital market environment, we tend to focus long-term, but also recognize short-term impacts as well. So looking at 2024, we ended up in pretty positive territory. So think back to this time last year, there were still a lot of expectation for recession, which we managed to avoid. So we did see positive GDP growth throughout the year, coming in a little bit behind 2023, but still positive estimated around two and a half percent. So good growth. How that impacted overall performance through 2024, positive returns across all major market asset classes that we offer to participants. Fourth quarter was a little bit more mixed. So looking specifically here at US equities, again, positive returns. What really drove the markets here were large cap over small cap and growth over value, which has been a fairly consistent theme that we've been seeing. The concentration within those indices is still a driving factor. So if you look at the last year over through the calendar year 2024, almost a third of the S and P's return came from the magnificent seven. So we've talked about the concentration in those top seven stocks, which again, throughout the year remained a driving force. As a reminder, the magnificent seven, those are Apple, Amazon, Alphabet, Google, Meta, Nvidia, Tesla, I missed one, Microsoft. So the performance of those seven names has a huge impact on the overall index return within large cap. And we'll see that as we look at the active managers that you all are employing for participants. Overweighting, underweighting those seven names can have a really big impact on relative to benchmark returns. So we'll take a look at that. And then also some concentration, not to the same magnitude, but some concentration within the small cap index as well. Nearly 20% of the return for 2024 came from micro and super micro, especially in the first half of the year. So creating some challenges, a little bit of opportunity, but also some challenges for active management within that space. On the next page, please, Patty, looking at international equities. Challenging end of the year in the fourth quarter with negative returns really across the board throughout the different regions and capitalizations within non-US equities, driven largely by concerns about tariffs post-election. We saw declines in emerging markets and the US dollar was a bit of a headwind there as well. But during the year, positive returns, so less positive than US equity, but positive returns broadly about five and a half percent for the ACWE XUS index. As a reminder, that X, the ACWE XUS is a blend of developed and emerging markets. So participants have that broadly diversified opportunity within the plan. We're also seeing valuations for international equities at pretty extreme lows relative to US equities. So said differently, international stocks are a lot cheaper right now than are US. So still, you know, good to offer participants that diversification and that opportunity there. Last but not least, fixed income on the next page. So looking at the bond market. Here we saw steepening in the yield curve in the fourth quarter. So the aggregate index was down about 3.1%, still positive for the year, up 1.3%, but kind of a challenging end to 2024. The riskier areas of the market were the better performers. So higher-yield securities and also leveraged loans. So some of the managers do have some high-yield exposure within there, but a little bit of a challenging end for fixed income. And with that, we'll skip to the next page and go on to the investment fund balances. Which give us the total allocation just a little bit more, please, Patty. On the next page. There we go. Thank you so much. So here we can see the total allocations broken out by investment option. So we did see balances, the overall assets under management within the plan did decline in the fourth quarter due to a combination of outflows and also investment losses. Again, several of the asset classes giving negative performance, but still over $17.6 billion in participant assets in the plan. This also gives a view of the options that are available to participants. So when they log in, these are the options they see that are investable. And the menu is what we call an active passive mirror. So for major asset classes, participants can choose between a passive option or an active option. The inflation responsive fund is the one exception where we just have the passive option and then stable value is not available passively. So those two differences, but otherwise participants can make that choice or they can leverage Goalmaker. So those that don't necessarily want to set their own allocation can use the Goalmaker program to do it for them. But again, good broad choice for participants offered here, which we're supportive of from a mini perspective. And the last thing I'll point out is on the next page, looking at performance. And again, we start here with what the participant sees. So this is really their experience and then we'll take a deeper dive into what drives that. With the passive options on the top half of this page, the real driver here is are the passive managers, in this case, BlackRock primarily. Are they tracking the index, keeping that tracking here tight, keeping fees low? We can confirm that yes, they are all tracking their index, doing a great job there. So no issues or concerns on the passive front. And then looking at the active managers below, stable value, we've talked about this over the last several quarters. When we see rates rising, it does, we do have underperformance from stable value. So over the long-term, we expect stable value. So over the long term, we expect stable value will outperform money market. But in that near term period as rates rise, it does take a while for the overall stable value portfolio to catch up a bit. We, I mean, we just talked a lot about that, but I do want to draw your attention to the peer rankings here. So Galleys is ranking in the top decile over short term and long term periods. So even though behind the benchmark, um, we do look at them versus other options, competitors, um, and managers that the board could consider and still feel strongly that Galleys is serving participants well there. Looking at the other option, performance relative to benchmarks is a little bit mixed. Fixed income has very consistently added value relative to, uh, the Bloomberg aggregate index, a few basis points behind for the quarter, but longer term, very strong performance. Um, the equity space is not surprising, given what we just talked about with the capital market environment, has been a little bit more challenged relative to the benchmark. So longer term performance had been strong over the last 12 to 18 months, a little bit more challenged. So you'll see mixed results from a large cap option ahead for the quarter, but a little bit behind the benchmark over longer periods. Um, international generally ahead, short term, long term, a little bit of underperformance in the intermediate periods. And then small midcap has had some challenges as well, especially this year, um, with some of the concentrations within that index as well. So with that, Weston will walk us through some of the drivers of the, of this performance that we're looking at. Again, this is what participants see. And then board and staff are responsible for looking at the underlying components of each of those options. So Weston's going to give us some more information on what's driving these returns.
Great. Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, good morning, Mr. Treasurer, members of the board, staff. Um, thank you. Uh, just want to cover a little bit on the individual manager performance. As Elizabeth mentioned, what the participants see is, is more at the option level. Uh, the drivers of performance, you know, really are the underlying managers here for the, for the active funds. Um, you know, there could at times be some structural, uh, you know, influences, but as best we can, we have tried to squeeze a lot of those uh, structural influences out. Um, so that would be like a, a value or a growth bias or, you know, uh, you know, a capitalization bias among, uh, some of the, some of the equity managers. Um, just, you know, to, to maybe remind the board also, there are, you know, formally three managers that are on your watch list. Uh, those managers, I would say maybe in, uh, ascending order of importance here is, are Macquarie, uh, Sands Capital and TCW, um, all on watch for, uh, not solely performance reasons, but more for personnel changes and then some, you know, in some cases, performance has been an influence as to the, the, the reason why they are on watch. Maybe I'll just start with, um, TCW and Patty, if you could go forward two pages, be great. Um, we'll start with, with TCW, uh, one of your active fixed income managers. As a reminder, TCW tends to be one of the more conservative of what we would call core plus managers. So, um, you know, that plus being sectors and or securities outside the Bloomberg aggregate index. Uh, they tend to be a little bit more conservative in that they do not include as many, uh, you know, high yield or, or um, lower quality fixed income instruments as say a PJM would below. Um, their performance relative to the benchmark has, you know, struggled a little bit here. More recently, they were actually put on watch, not for performance at all, but more for, um, you know, two things. Number one, the, some personnel changes, TCW merged with MetWest probably close to 10 years ago. Um, and largely kept that MetWest team. And so now we had the retirements of the last MetWest individuals. So just, you know, our, our concern was are they going to keep, you know, the structure in place that MetWest, uh, had imparted, you know, or, or influenced them to have over the past several years. Um, and so, um, you know, we, we have had a chance to meet with the, the teams and with, uh, with TCW extensively. And we do remain confident that, that they are going to keep that philosophy and process intact, um, here for TCW. Uh, the more recent performance, you, you might be looking at, you know, one of the things, this is another thing that we were paying attention to was their duration. Their active duration tilts, uh, did seem to, uh, increase here more recently. Um, and, and coinciding with, with some of the retirements that I mentioned. And so that has been the challenge on performance. Several years ago, TCW got into a little bit of trouble. Um, you know, by actively managing, managing duration. And so that was just something that we wanted to gain some comfort on is make sure that a lot of the value added is going to continue to come from security selection rather than some of these duration and yield curve plays. Um, and we have gained some confidence that that, that will remain, uh, consistent with how they manage. Then moving on down, we'll talk a little bit about Macquarie, uh, large cap value. This is, uh, one of your, uh, value managers that has struggled. Uh, they also announced a personnel change. One of the portfolio managers, uh, is effectively retiring here. Um, and you know, I, I, I think kind of the performance has been quite a challenge. Call it five years ago, uh, one of the tie nut, the kind of architect of the strategy retired. Nick Leviney succeeded him and put in part, put in place his own team. And so I think one of the, one of the disappointments that we've seen is just in a lot of the ideas and the execution uh, from that new team has just really, uh, struggled and not really, uh, panned out as we had hoped. Um, we are, um, uh, working with staff to, to continue to, to evaluate options here for, for, uh, Macquarie. And then Sands, um, in terms of performance, uh, the performance pattern is a very volatile performance pattern. Um, and you know, we, we think that this is something that a multi-manager structure allows you all to afford some of that, uh, volatile performance pattern. And they have added value, while not over the last, you know, uh, over the near term timeframes. A lot of this, uh, difficult performance comes from a challenging period in 2022. They are working some of that off when I would say relative to some of the past, uh, periods of underperformance that we've seen from Sands. The bounce back has come a little bit sooner. So when, when we, we did get quite a bounce back in 2023, then 2024 was another step backwards. However, just, you know, as a, there's an update on Sands, just to give you a sense, they are about eight to nine percent ahead of the benchmark here, uh, in the first quarter to date, just given there's been a lot of volatility among some of those magnificent seven names, a lot of the AI names, uh, with the, with the news of deep seek and, uh, Sands has managed that well. And I think one of the other kind of big things that has influenced a lot of the large cap growth managers is how much they hold of some of those very large mag cap names, the magnets and seven names and, and Sands has been perennially, perennially underweight to a lot of those. And so that has been a challenge here for, for performance, especially in that 2022, uh, timeframe. And then, um, finally, I'll just mention a manager that's not on watch, maybe just two pages forward, Patty. Uh, which is Brown. Um, and this has been, um, a challenge performer here in the small cap. Uh, relative to what we would expect from Brown, uh, this is in line. Um, it has been disappointing, especially over the last year. A lot of their perfor, underperformance challenges came from what they did not hold and what they typically do not hold. So um, they're, you know, they focus on what they call the three Gs, um, sound governance, uh, durable growth, and then kind of a scalable go-to market. Uh, and so with a lot of what has worked in especially this small and midcap growth space has been, you know, certain names that don't fit in those categories. So you think of super micro, uh, some of the AI plays, micro strategy, those that, you know, really just rocketed up, um, based on kind of hopes of what, how AI would revolutionize everything. And, um, they just didn't see any sort of, you know, path to profitability or, or, you know, that durable growth that they would expect from, from the, the securities they hold. Um, so, you know, in, in, in terms of what we would expect, this is certainly in line with expectations, but over time we do expect for, for Brown to outperform and provide a, a solid risk adjusted return. With that, I'll pause for comments and see if there are any questions about any of the managers.
Thank you. Actually, one quick question for me on Sands. Uh, I'd be curious, is there a particular factor that's consistent there that explains the difference in performance between them, the index? Or is it, it's simply security level selection? All right, I, I, are they just more midcap than, than the index?
So more recently, that has absolutely been the case. They have been more midcap than the index. Um, is that, is that always going to be the case? Uh, that, that's a harder, you know, statement to, to, you know, get behind. But, but certainly over the last five or so years, they have, you know, if you look at the Russell 1000 growth, the median uh, market cap versus where their portfolio is, they are, they are more midcap. And that has been a, a, you know, a hindrance or a headwind to performance.
But it has been consistent at least.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, here now let's move on to, uh, Chris and Chris, uh, for the fourth quarter investment compliance summary report.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Again. Yeah. So, uh, the memo I'm covering will be pretty brief, but it's a very important piece of kind of our oversight. About that first section, the divestment policies and prohibited holdings. We can confirm there were no prohibited holdings held in the supplemental retirement plans group trusts during the quarter. With respect to executive orders, BNY continues daily compliance testing for prohibited holdings identified as communist Chinese military industrial companies, abbreviated CCMCs related to the presidential executive order 14032, um, published back in 2021. I know SRP investment managers were invested in CCMCs during the quarter. And lastly, with respect to our investment guidelines, the supplemental retirement plan staff continues to monitor investment manager guidelines on a daily basis. As well, there were no material issues during the quarter.
Any questions? Okay, uh, we'll now move to the public comment period, uh, for any individual organization who would like to address the board. We'll figure this out, uh, online to the extent that there are public comments. I'd ask if you limit your comments to no more than two minutes. Uh, do we have anyone who would like to make a public comment?
We've not had anybody sign up, sign up treasure, but if there's anyone on the line, certainly you can speak.
Okay, hearing none, I'll consider the public comment, uh, section closed. Let's move on to, uh, our final matters here. Uh, board trustee, are there any additional comments from anyone on the board? Hearing none. Okay. Uh, the date of our next meeting is Thursday, May 22nd, uh, 2025 at 9:00 AM. Uh, which leaves the final agenda item, and that is I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. I have a second.
I'll change second.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, we'll call the roll, please.
All right, Treasure Bryner.
Aye.
Charlie Perouse. Holly Perouse. Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Lanier McRee.
Aye.
James Richardson.
Aye.
I sing. And Robert Hillman.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned, appreciate it and stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, treasure.